Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting in the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's Wednesday, August 3rd, and we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Jones.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda, our department updates, and we have with us Ms. Kelly from the Health Department. Good morning.
Good morning. Just a few updates this morning. Transmission of COVID does remain elevated. We have seen an increase in hospitalizations across the county. We want to remind the public that free home tests are available at both the Health Department and the Public Health Clinic. And remind those that are eligible for boosters that this can further enhance or restore protection.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Right. Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other departments here to offer an update? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to public comment. Public comment is reserved for items that are not on our agenda. Each commenter is limited to three minutes per person. The same is also true on our agenda items. There is a clock that will be running through TSD, and at two minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone. And when you hear that tone, that means you have 30 seconds left to make your comment. We do have someone on the Zoom screen, but we're going to prioritize folks who are in the NatU Hill Room first. So, Mr. Spoonmore, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Eric Spoonmore with Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this morning, regrettably, and despite my best efforts, I wasn't able to get a spot in your agenda this week, so I want to make good use of my limited time here and share some important information with you. The Chamber has been a strong proponent of the expanded Convention Center project, which is supposed to be funded by the Monroe County Food and Beverage Tax, which passed five years ago. Since 2018, the food and beverage tax has collected over $14 million, but sadly, there's been no progress on the expansion. Understandably, the COVID pandemic disrupted the planning and construction process, but I'm confident that the community is now ready to focus on our future and identify a path forward for meaningful progress on the expansion plans. As you know, the county commissioners play a critical role in the Convention Center expansion process because you own the Convention Center assets. The city has an equally critical role to play because it holds the food and beverage tax revenue that's been earmarked for the expansion of the Convention Center. And over the past several months, I've been having a lot of conversations about the Convention Center expansion with our businesses and city and county officials, including you all. I can say undeniably that there's strong enthusiasm for jump-starting this project as soon as possible. And this would include the overwhelming majority of the elected officials that I have spoken with, many of which have made recent public statements to that effect. The Chamber, our membership, and particularly our small downtown Bloomington-based businesses are in strong support of the expansion, and we'd like to see meaningful progress made as soon as possible. And to that end, we seek your partnership in making it happen. So, my three minutes here with you today won't provide nearly enough time for me to go into all the details with you right now, but I'm excited to share here publicly that the Chamber, through our many conversations over the last few months with key stakeholders, has identified a viable path forward for Convention Center expansion in a way that would be a win-win for all parties involved. It would involve a transfer of assets from the county to the city, and I'm pleased to say that the city is willing to reasonably compensate the county in order to do this. This would provide much-needed resources for county government to pursue other high-priority projects, such as the new quarry park that we're excited about, trail enhancements, and Cars Farm Park improvements, just to name a few. And I'd be happy to share more details with you about this if time would permit, but I really wanted to give you an opportunity to hear about this first before we discuss it in more detail with the County Council next week, where I think it's likely we'll have an opportunity to have a more thorough discussion on the details of the proposal. So, given our limited time together today, I'd encourage you all to tune into the council meeting next week or join in the conversation as a partner to finding a solution. At any rate, I know I'm closing in on my three minutes here, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. I truly hope, along with so many others, that we can achieve meaningful progress on this project. And in order to do that, we need your partnership. We need your teamwork and collaboration to deliver on the promises made to the community for an expanded Convention Center facility that we all want to see. Thank you so much for all that you do, and I think there may be some others here who would like to speak as well.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonmore.
Hello, folks. I'm Don Griffin. I'm the Deputy Mayor for the City of Bloomington. Hope you're doing well. Want to talk to you a little bit about what Eric just proposed. The city of Bloomington is very excited to look into the future of getting this done. It's been said five years. I think it was 2017 when we let the public know that we were moving forward with the expansion of the Convention Center. We're ready to talk. I'm ready to listen, and let's move forward. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Talisha Kopic, and I'm with the Convention Center Management Company in Downtown Bloomington, Inc., and it's good to see you again. And just wanted to say thank you for your support of the Convention Center over the years. Today, I'm sharing that our local business and conference business is back by the end of the year to 2018 levels, and the schedule looks strong for next year. Our local groups need their fundraisers. Our local citizens need their social events, such as wedding. We're hosting a big Indian wedding this Sunday. Local corporations need their meetings, and associations need their educational and networking components. This year, we've seen attendance at the events steadily growing. You know, just from our experience over the 30 years, you know, 1991 was recession, 2008 was recession, 2020, the pandemic. And, you know, with the hospitality industry here in town has been able to bounce back from that. I did want to share some of the groups that have been here over the last couple of weeks. Indiana Rural Water Alliance was here for a three-day conference. You know, they're doing business, Midwestern Engineers, Zippity, talking about rural water development. Secretly Canadian Distribution is there this week for three days. If you get a chance to come down, it's 30-year-olds and very tech music-oriented for their label summit. Spotify's there, Asmatic Kitty, Space Bomb. So, it's kind of this whole new, like, generation of people, you know, still wanting to gather. They still want to see each other. They want to network. We're starting to see the hybrid stuff really kind of go away, that they really want that connection of people. They might record some of their things and play it later, but you can kind of see, like, as the months go on and getting deeper into the year, people are wanting to start get back at it. Next week, we have crisis hostage negotiators here for three days, and they're going to be dealing with mental health issues and different folks that have to work through some of those issues. So, the Convention Center really takes on the topic of the day, just as we were a vaccine clinic, because that's what was needed at the time. Now, we talk about the topics. Bloomington's a hub of education and learning, and people want to come here to gather and share information and do business. The building's been going for 31 years now. Last year, during the pandemic, we celebrated 30 years as a meeting and event venue. Some of those systems are real worn out, and upgrades are really, really needed. The building will celebrate its 100th anniversary next year. But tourism and hospitality industry is a natural fit for this community. It's good business that supports many of our amenities and small local businesses and attractions. So, I just wanted to kind of give you an update of what's happening in that meeting and event world. But thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm Mike McAfee. I'm the Executive Director at Visit Bloomington. I just want to say how impressive that is to see Talisha finish her comments in less than three minutes. I don't think I've ever seen my good friend do that. But I wanted to say, just we, the Visit Bloomington and the tourism industry here in Monroe County, we support what Eric says, and we support the commissioners and the council, and we hope you'll work together with the city and the city council to work out a partnership soon on this important project. We really urge you to do that, and thank you for your attention to that. But very quickly, I wanted to say the Health Department saw them on here. Thank you to them. Thank you to the county. Thank you to everyone for making Bloomington and Monroe County so safe, relatively safe over the pandemic, safer than any other community in this state, as far as I'm concerned, for visitors. We've shown that over and over again. So, again, thank you to everyone involved in that. Things are going really well with the tourism industry right now. Lodging revenue is up in the market 22% over 2019, 58% over 2021. All of Visit Bloomington's key performance indicators are up 10 to 15% over 2019, 30 to 40% over 2021. Our sales staff, our group sales staff, will be in Detroit next week calling on about 35 sports and convention planners as that business continues to come back. Just again, want to thank everybody for making our industry so lively and healthy here in Bloomington and Monroe County. I also want to say thank you very much for your vision on the quarry land. I look forward to working with you and supporting you on that project in the future. I know it's a long time coming, but thank you for that, and I want to wish you luck with the Justice Center. Great project. I hope it all goes smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kirby Brown. I'm the General Manager of the Spring Hill Suites here in downtown Bloomington. I'm also the President of the Board of Directors for Visit Bloomington. I just wanted to speak. I know there had been concern when the pandemic rolled out, the industry itself started looking at solutions for how we would maintain business moving forward. You know, what would the changes be if meetings were no longer something that was happening? I know that concern's been discussed ad nauseam. I just wanted to report, I work for Aimbridge Hospitality, which manages 1,500 hotels across the country, so we're in many different markets. The resounding thought process right now is in-person is back. The demand for in-person meetings and convention-style meetings is not going to go away like we had feared when the pandemic first rolled out. And even speaking, I think Indiana University has done an amazing job of making sure they're on the leading edge of all things caution when it comes to pandemic-related issues. In speaking with Kelly, Executive Partners, which I think is obviously highly regarded, and their meeting planners, every meeting that they had done previous to the pandemic that were in-person meetings, all of those have now come back to in-person meetings as well. So, you see it even locally where we're taking the extra steps and extra caution. I just think the concern of moving to a Zoom life from now on, I think that has actually moved away, and I just wanted to give that feedback from somebody who's in the industry and speaking to multiple different markets on a weekly basis on calls. So, if you have any other questions that I can be of any assistance to, I'm at the Spring Hill Suites right down the street. Just let me know. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you, guys, for your time and all you do.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the President of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We're a nonprofit that serves all of Monroe County. And when we talk about economic development, we define that as fostering conditions for prosperity in a community. So, it's very wide-ranging and hits many different issues. I have two items that I wanted to address today. One is just to follow the remarks about the Convention Center. Among our major local employers, we do see support and use of the Convention Center and needs for expanded space for the employers, the trainings, et cetera, that we see in town here. And this was also something covered in our economic development memo that we shared with local governments in spring. The second item that I wanted to touch on today is an invitation to anyone that lives or works in Monroe County. The BEDC is working with other partners across the community on an initiative called the Economic Vitality Project. And that's an initiative to pull individuals together across the community to do three things. One, say what are some of the biggest challenges and opportunities that we want to tackle together in fostering prosperity? Number two, how can we better support the existing initiatives and efforts to address those issues? And then number three, where do we need to fill in the gaps? Topics that we're tackling include things like housing, workforce, which includes, of course, wages, infrastructure, jobs creation, and quality of life, which hits on items ranging from childcare to transit, et cetera. So, at the end of the day, it's a question of how do we make this a better place to live, work, and play and bring people together across different sectors in doing so? Wanted to thank many members of Monroe County Government who've participated so far in some way at this. We greatly appreciate it. And then we also wanted to invite anyone in the community to be involved in this as well because we want to make sure that we have broad representation from all different walks of life in Monroe County. If you go to our website, there is an engagement survey that anybody could take. It's at BloomingtonEDC.com/EBP. So, if you, or if you Google the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, there's a section on there for the Economic Vitality Project. Anyone can fill out that survey to get involved in one of our working groups or focus groups, just as ways to provide feedback. We really hope people will be part of this from across the community to make this place a better place to live, work, and play, and support the many initiatives that you're working on right now. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else have public comments to offer? Okay, we have on Zoom, Mr. Shelton. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton, speaking this morning on behalf of CASA, as a court-appointed special advocate. CASA is a volunteer-powered program that provides representation in juvenile court for child victims of abuse and neglect. They provide support to these children to ensure that they remain at the forefront of the court proceedings. They advocate to make sure the children are receiving the most effective services, are in the best placements, and have the most optimal outcomes. At present, we have 39 children for whom we do not have a volunteer to service their CASA. We will have a training starting September 19th and running through October 10th for a class of potential new CASAs. It'll be Monday, Wednesdays, and Thursday evenings from 5:30 to 8:30, and it will be in person. So, I invite people to look into this. You can go to MonroeCountyCASA.org, click on the volunteer link, and learn details. Or you can call 333-2272 and talk to a staff member. Then in addition, because we have over three dozen children for whom we have no CASA, we're going to have a training for what we call Child Visit Monitors. And a child visit monitor's duties are only to, once a month, go visit with the child wherever the child is placed, fill out a brief form, and provide it to the CASA staff. The CASA staff will use this as a vehicle for identifying the factors that will let them decide which children need advocate first as they become available. So, I ask people to look into this. That training, by the way, will be just three nights, September 12th, 14th, and 15th, again, from 5:30 to 8:30 on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And it also will be in person in the CASA office, which is now in the showers building in the commercial area on the west side. So, please look into that. I hope it's a volunteer opportunity that would suit some of the people out there who are listening, and I thank the opportunity to spread the word.
All right. Thank you so much. And I don't see any other public comments, so we will move on to our next agenda item, please.
Move approval of the minutes from July 27, 2022. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, edits?
I didn't see any.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes for July 27, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, counts payable, August 3, 2022. Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Mr. Miller joining us to tell us all about it. Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for claims was $2,648,294.39. $702,750 was for the clerk of the court for Vernal Pike Connector Road Parcel II. $432,732.51 was for Anthem, Inc., for July medical and pharmacy claims. $304,380.60 was for innkeeper's tax collection distribution for July. $258,866.05 was for wheel-on-sur tax distribution for May. And finally, the larger items, $204,801.76 was for First Financial Bank for the principal and interest payment for the parking garage.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Is there any public comment on this item? Either come to the podium in the NatU Hill Room or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the claims docket accounts payable, August 3, 2022, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. I will note for the record, we've received a report from Weights and Measures, and it covers the time period from June 16th to July 15, 2022. And we're on to new business, please.
Move approval of new era technology agreement renewal, fund name cumulative capital, fund number 1138, in an amount of $11,165. Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Krim joining us. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Greg Krom, Technical Services Director. Our current For the Record software that we use to record all our court hearings and everything in our various courtrooms, the support agreement's set to expire this August the 9th. What I have for you this morning is just a request to renew that agreement for the next year, provide support for software and the peripheral hardware that goes with it.
All right. Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, it looked pretty straightforward.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing this forward. I appreciate it. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the NatU Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the new era technology agreement renewal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please. Thank you, sir.
Move approval of ordinance 2022-22 to amend various traffic ordinances. Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Ridge here to tell us all about it.
Good morning. So, this is to amend ordinance 86-12, which is yield locations. At Chapel Hill Road, westbound for Guthrie Road slash Chapel Hill Road, and Rose Creek Drive for Indian Valley, those are deletions. And then we amend 8612 to add the following yield locations. Victor Pike, southbound for Fluck Mill Road slash Victor Pike, and Indian Valley Drive for Rose Creek Drive. Then we are amending 86-06 at the following stop locations. These are additions. Guthrie Road for Chapel Road, Chapel Hill Road for Guthrie Road. It'll make it an always stop. And then 8901 ordinance is to add the following no-truck locations for Lawson Road and Fleming Place. And these were approved at the last Traffic Commission Board, and they also are warranted within the MUTCB.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Thank you for organizing this, and thank you to the Traffic Commission. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the NatU Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving ordinance 2022-22 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you so much. And we'll move on to appointments, please.
I move approval of, or I move that we appoint Matt Coller to the Animal Management Commission for the remainder of a two-year appointment, which will end 12/31/23. Appoint Randy Cassidy to the Redevelopment Commission. This is the remainder of a two-year appointment, which will end January 1, 2024. Molly Otto, excuse me, to Women's Commission for the remainder of a two-year appointment ending January 1, 2024. And appoint Pam Davidson to the BCA, and I forgot to record the date.
We don't have the dates with us, but yes, it's, we have her appointment. Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion and a second. Thank you to each of these good folks for their willingness to serve. All those in favor of approving the four appointments outlined signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And again, many thanks to our great county residents. Just a few announcements today. And we have a office hours that are available six times during the month via Zoom. So, go to the county calendar at CO.Monroe.in.us and look at the calendar, and there's six different days and times available each month. And please join us there. And we have a number of openings on words and commissions, including Plan Commission and the Environmental Commission, so please get your applications in through CO.Monroe.in.us. There are free COVID tests available at 119 West 7th. The health building, please drop by there between 8 and 4, Monday through Friday. The next blood drives are Tuesday, September 6, 1 to 6, and Friday, September 9, 10 to 3. These are at IV tech. And we are grateful for the help of the Red Cross with this as well. Go to redcross.org to make an appointment. We'll note that we are flying flags and have staff this week in memory of retired Judge Mark Callums, who passed away last weekend. So, our hearts go out to his family and friends and everyone in the justice community. We do have an event on, do you want to talk about on Thursday, the Driver Event?
Yes, tomorrow afternoon at 4 o'clock here in the NatU Hill Room, we're having a dedication service to name a bridge after Reserve Deputy James Driver. It will be shown via YouTube, I believe, as well as via Zoom, and people are welcome to join us tomorrow for that ceremony. I want to thank State Senator Shelley Yoder for making that possible. She was very, very gracious, and her staff worked with me really hard to make that happen.
Yeah, it's a really great thing. So, hopefully, folks can join us, and maybe we'll get it on our calendar. It's not on there right now. All right. Anything else for the good of the order?
Well, I'd like to remind people that we don't have a crystal ball about COVID. It's one of the reasons you and I are mashed up again. And there will be a press conference again this Friday because we feel like we need to stay on top of it with people. So, please, we don't know what's going to happen this winter and fall. IU students will be back within the next couple of weeks, and I know IU is taking very, very good precautions again. And we will continue to work with our neighbors around the community. But I just want to remind people that COVID's not done with us.
No, we may be done with it, but it is not done with us. Okay, thank you. All right. With that, we are going to adjourn. We will come back at 10:45 for our work session agenda. So, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. So, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.